We are at 6:30 PM, so I will now call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order on January 24th, 2023. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Quinn.
Present.
Jones.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by Jones. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Onto item number four. I have a proclamation here for Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas, human trafficking is the exploitation of a person through force, fraud, or coercion. It is found in the United States, most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, and debt bondage. And whereas, one of the world's fastest-growing crimes is the buying and selling of people, whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to isolation, economic hardship, and an increase in abuse and online activity. Communities in eastern Iowa continue to see an increase in the number of people victimized, with Chains Interrupted serving over 100 survivors in our area in 2022. And whereas prosecutions for this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom, and fuels organized crime, have decreased, with only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking in 2021. No convictions were obtained in the state's appellate courts in 2021. And whereas, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the misdiagnosis of its indicators. And whereas, every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking and pornography, choosing products that are not made with forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And whereas, the city of Corleville joins Chains Interrupted and other local organizations in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, mayor of Corleville, do hereby proclaim January 2023 to be Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all of our citizens to become more informed of this growing problem, to be vigilant, and to report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of its forms in our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at 319-364-0222. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-373-7888. Signed on this 24th day of January 2023, Megan Foster, Mayor. And I know we are going to have some representatives from Chains Interrupted with us tonight. I'm not sure if they are here right now. They had several other engagements. You're here! Fantastic. Would you like to step up to the microphone and say a few words for us, please?
I want to first off thank the city of Corleville, and to the city council members, as well as you, Mayor Foster, for bringing this to the forefront and making this a priority this month. To Chains Interrupted, St. Luke's Mercy Hospital, Mercy in Cedar Rapids, and in Iowa City, and the University of Iowa Hospital and Clinics for their work on educating and helping stop human trafficking in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your important work. Would anybody else like to speak with your group? Or, okay. Would you like a photo?
No.
Okay. Just right up front here. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Nice to meet you.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yes. All right. Onto item number five, community comments. This is the time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment period time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers we have, or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So I know we have some folks that are here to give public comment. Would you like to step up to the microphone? Make sure that you sign in and give us your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Fitzpatrick, and my address is 15 Auburn East Lane, Corleville, Iowa. I have been a resident of Corleville for 22 years, and I am grateful for the work you do. I am proud to be a part of this community. I am here on behalf of the neighborhoods of Dovetail Estates, Auburn Hills, Auburn East, Forest Gate, Forever Green Heights, Whitetail Lane, Johnston Way Northeast, and anyone who has ever driven on First Avenue, North Liberty Road, between Oakdale Boulevard and Dubuque Street, which means I am here representing our entire community, as this is a commonly-driven road between Corleville and North Liberty. I am requesting that action be taken to lower the existing speed limits of 45 and 55 miles per hour to a maximum of 35 miles per hour with consideration for 25 miles per hour in some areas to improve the safety of this road. I have learned through the process of engaging residents in this issue, that this request has been brought forth multiple times by individuals and groups, including homeowners associations, with no resultant change. I have with me today a signed petition from over 125 residents in favor of this change. We have been told that there are multiple jurisdictions that oversee this road, and that it is a complicated process to lower a speed limit. We have also been told that traffic flow studies dictate speed limit decisions, and that this road may have a classification that makes it difficult to change. That said, we are asking the leaders of the multiple jurisdictions to come together and take whatever measures need to be done to lower the speed limit now. When approaching this issue in the fall, we were provided with the most recent traffic flow study done by the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County. That study was done in 2018, five years ago. Based on that study, speed limits were not changed. However, there were several highlighted trends in the report that pointed to a projected increase in population, and the addition of a high school, which we all know to be North Liberty High School, that would possibly support future change. That change is now. I believe in data collection and due diligence when making any decision, and I understand there are possible future plans to do another traffic flow study. I also believe that a simple drive on this 2.3-mile road, especially during peak travel times and at night, will clearly demonstrate that change needs to take place now, regardless of a traffic flow study outcome. To that end, I'm asking every person who is in a decision-making position to please travel this road, and drive in and out of a neighborhood along the way to experience what it is like to enter and exit this road. Here are a few things that you will experience. You will be on a narrow, two-way road with no shoulder, unmarked curvatures, and dangerous speeds. You will pass by seven-plus neighborhoods and multiple homes. During peak hours, there will be heavy traffic going both directions. During deer season, you will witness multiple deer crossings. In the summer, children and adults will bike or walk across or alongside this road. Multiple large construction and rock trucks will be traveling at high speeds. Was that my five minutes?
Yeah, but it's...
No.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. Good, because I had more to say.
Yeah.
During the school year, children will cross the road or be getting on and off a bus at a neighborhood entrance. And finally, you will be driving along several inexperienced teens, making their way to high school. When you reach your max speed of 55 miles per hour, you will be traveling north by several large neighborhoods, heading towards the new Forever Green Heights neighborhood and the new roundabout. There is no warning sign to slow down as you approach the new roundabout, and the speed limits approaching from either side are 55 miles per hour. There is no room for error at any point along this road, especially here. I shudder to think what could happen on a low-visibility night with an unfamiliar driver. As you enter a neighborhood, you will notice there are no turning lanes. As residents are entering their neighborhoods at a slower pace, cars following are often traveling closely and at higher speeds. As you come out of a neighborhood, you will experience the quick decision-making and literal punch it takes to enter the road before a car traveling 45 to 65 miles per hour comes around a blind curve just seconds away. And while some neighborhoods are more challenging than others, all have concerning curves and blind spots, as well as cross-traffic, traveling at high speeds, that makes it difficult and dangerous to enter and exit. Recognizing there are long-term additional structural changes that could improve the safety of this road, the urgency is now to lower the speed limit throughout this entire 2.3-mile road. This solution would immediately help lessen the risk of harm or an accident in the future, creating a safer road for all who travel it. This road is no longer the rural road it once was, and adjustments need to be made. I have had several residents approach me in favor of this change who also took the time to calculate the time difference traveling 35 versus 45 to 55 miles per hour. It was less than two minutes on average, and I did it myself tonight, and it was one minute. I think we would all agree that even if it took much longer than two minutes, it would be worth the time to slow down if a life was saved. In closing, I would like to highlight several similar roads nearby that have 35 mile-per-hour speed limits, and in some cases, less residential influence. They include the following: 12th Avenue between Oakdale Boulevard and Forever Green Road; Dubuque Street from Oakdale Boulevard to North Liberty with a short exception; First Avenue south of Oakdale Road to the interstate; and Oakdale Boulevard between Dubuque Street and First Avenue. Thank you for your time and your attention to this important matter. We recognize there are many, many issues that require your thoughtful attention, and we appreciate this one becoming a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us during our comment period? And we will be discussing this issue during our work session.
Thank you.
This evening. Anyone else? Okay. All right. We will move on then to item number six. We have two parts to this item. This is our State Revolving Loan Application. This is a public hearing for the review and making comments on an environmental information document as required by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for receiving money through the State Revolving Funds Program. So I will open this item with our public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Are there any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing, and I would consider a motion to receive, approve, and place on file an environmental information document.
Excuse me.
Oh, yes.
I actually need to read a statement.
You do? Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, then. Does this need to be part of the public hearing?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question.
Yeah, we'll just make sure this is still part of the public hearing.
Okay, yep. So I will unclose the public hearing. Reopen it. Reopen it. Unclose it, reopen it. Yes.
It's a page and a half.
Okay. All right.
The purpose of this project is to make improvements to the city's wastewater infrastructure, increase capacity, and to install sanitary sewer to provide service to the existing and future development in the Westland Use Area, generally north of Highway 6 and east of Interstate 380. The sanitary sewer improvements include construction of 15-inch to 30-inch diameter sanitary sewer, manholes, and associated connections from Highway 6 north to Fox Valley Subdivision, and east to the Iowa Medical and Classification Center. A description of the alternative options considered is available upon request. A summary of the impact of the improvements on the sewer use charges is available upon request. Federal, state, and local agencies were asked to comment on the proposed project to better assess the potential impact to the environment. A list of the agencies contacted is available. To date, no adverse comments were received from any agencies or the general public. Summary of reasons for concluding: no significant impact. The project will not significantly affect the pattern and type of land use, industrial, commercial, agricultural, recreational, residential, or growth and distribution of population. The project will not conflict with local, regional, or state land use plans or policies. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will determine if the proposed project will impact wetlands or jurisdictional waters of the United States. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has been provided Section 7 documentation that the project will not impact protected species or their habitats, provided that any tree cutting is conducted between October 1st and March 31st. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will review the documentation and determine if any impact to protected species is possible. If any state or federally listed threatened or endangered species or communities are found during the planning or construction phases, additional studies and/or mitigation may be required. The project will not displace population, alter the character of existing residential areas, or convert significant farmlands to non-agricultural purposes. The project will not affect the 100-year floodplain provided all necessary floodplain development permits, state and local, are obtained and the terms of which are abided by. The project will not have effect on parklands, preserves, other public lands, or areas of recognized scenic or recreational value. The Phase 1 archaeological investigation of the proposed project area has been completed. Results from this investigation will be submitted to the State Historical Preservation Office for review. The project will only proceed as planned if a determination of either no historic properties affected, or no adverse effect on historic properties can be appropriately reached with or without mitigation. The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon the local ambient air quality provided the applicant takes reasonable precautions to prevent the discharge of visible emissions of fugitive dust beyond the lot line of the property during the proposed project. 567 of the Iowa Administrative Code, Section 23.3, I think that's paragraph 2C. The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient noise levels, surface water quantity, groundwater quality or quantity, or water supply. No significant impact to surface water quality, fish, shellfish, wildlife, or their natural habitats is expected, provided that an NPDES General Permit Number 2 for stormwater discharge associated with construction activities is obtained and the terms of which are abided by.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Yes. And I apologize for skipping over that initially. Okay. So, public hearing is now officially closed. Okay. And I would entertain a motion to receive, approve, and place on file an environmental information document for the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Project. So moved. Moved by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion is approved unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. Onto item number seven, West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1 Tree Felling Project. This is a public hearing, and this is for an item that pertains to trees for the upcoming West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Project Phase 1. They need to be removed ahead of the April 1st Indiana BAT deadline that limits tree clearing. I will now open the public hearing on this item. Do we have any comments from the public? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. Okay. All right. I will now close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the West Land Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase 1 Tree Felling Project, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or comments, or any other discussion on this item? Okay. Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eight, West Core Business Park, Part 14. This is a public hearing on an item that would rezone this area to a commercial planned unit development 2 district, which would allow the construction of a four-story, 139-room hotel, and a 3,600-square-foot, one-story retail building on West Core Drive. We have several parts to this agenda item, starting with the Community Development Department Report, and the Planning and Zoning Commission Report from our Community Development Director, Dave Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. This site is 3.84 acres, and as you mentioned, the owner would like to construct a hotel, as well as a separate retail building on this site. This area is in the West Land Use Area Master Plan Overlay District, and is designated as corridor commercial. These areas typically are retail and general commercial services located along collector, as well as arterial streets. The proposed hotel is four stories, 50 feet tall, and predominantly masonry. More information on design has been provided in your council packets. And the hotel is 65,028 square feet, and as mentioned previously, 139 rooms. And the one-story retail building is 3,600 square feet and 25 feet tall. The West Land Use Area Master Plan sets forth specific site and building design guidelines. These guidelines further the goals and visions set forth in that master plan, and the proposed hotel and retail building have been reviewed by staff. The buildings comply with the architectural guidelines. The site design complies with the bulk regulations for the West Land Use Area regional commercial uses, as well as the parking, landscaping, and screening guidelines. And the land use plan supports the proposed hotel and retail uses. The final plat also conforms with the requirements for preparation filing. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their January 4th meeting. By vote of 5 to 0, the commission recommended to rezone West Core Business Park, Part 14, parcel number 063527007, from the industrial planned unit development 1 district to the commercial planned unit development 2 district, and approve the PUDB site plan, as well as the final plat. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. Okay. Item number C. I will open the public hearing on this. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to us? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing.
You want to speak?
Did you want to speak? Okay. That's all right. I'm clipping along. I'm clipping along. So, yes.
We've got to reopen.
Got to reopen it again. The public hearing is reopened, and so please introduce yourself to us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers and staff. My name is John Crump. I'm the chief operating officer of JD Royal Hospitality, and the developer on this project. I'm here to discuss with you this exciting project that we want to bring to the city of Corleville. We are a family-owned hospitality company with 25 years of experience. We're based out of Bettendorf, Iowa, and we are very excited to bring this, again, development to the city of Corleville. As Dave said, this dual-brand hotel will consist of 139 rooms. 71 rooms will be in Abbott, and 68 rooms will be at Candlewood. So it's basically two hotels in one structure. The hotel will have approximately 25 employees, 15 full-time, 10 part-time. Our retail space could have up to 25 employees also. And as David said, that space is 3,600 square feet, and so we're planning on putting in three 1,200-square-foot One of these units will have a drive-through. We're hoping to bring a national chain in, such as Starbucks, or maybe a Panera into that strip center right off 80 right there. And the other spaces could be used for another restaurant or a retail space. So we're looking forward to bringing this project into the city of Corleville, and we thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us? Okay. I think it's safe to close the public hearing. Again, closing the public hearing. And we will now consider the first reading of this ordinance.
Ordinance number 2023-1002, and ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, as previously amended. Rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as West Core Business Park, Part 14, parcel 0635276007, excuse me, from IPUD 1 Industrial Planned Unit Development 1 district to CPUD 2 Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 district, introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
Just an informational question, Dave. So is this, if I read the zoning map right, this track of land is immediately west of the Harley-Davidson?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Thanks for your interest. Hope it goes well.
Okay. Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item number nine, fiscal year 2024 budget maximum levy. This will set the total maximum property tax dollars hearing for fiscal year 2024 as required by the state of Iowa. And this is an additional step in the budget process that was created by legislation that was passed during the 2019 session. The public hearing for this item would be on February 14th, 2023. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing date on the total maximum property tax dollars for the fiscal year 2024, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jones. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
Yeah, I have heard from multiple sources that the rollback could be changed dramatically, and it could affect our next fiscal year. And I wondered whether we should wait until we hear what those changes are before we finalize our max levy. I assume there's no option to change this once we vote in two weeks, correct?
Yeah, correct. Once you adopt it, that's your maximum. I did look up today. You have to start the process at the next council meeting, so you could wait to set the public hearing at the next meeting, but you can't wait beyond that because you can't get through all the steps required by March 31st. So you could wait three weeks, but you would have to take action at that meeting.
And are we setting the max dollars, or the max rate?
Actually, it's the max dollars, but it equals the max rate, because the levy times the taxable value is set. So to get the maximum rate, you have to set the levies.
But is the taxable value set?
Yes. That's...
So the state cannot change that. Now, if the rollback changes, it won't affect Now, if the rollback changes, it won't affect next fiscal year.
Yeah, they can change that.
And then that's a taxable valuation going way down.
Right. Yeah, so that is what they could potentially change. I found out a little more today. It was an error that the Department of, Iowa Department of Revenue made that gave us the rollback increase to fifty-six point whatever percentage it is. And the actual number should have been fifty-four point whatever the number is, I don't have it right in front of me, but two percent basically less. And so, the question is whether the legislature changes that error this year or waits until next year to change that mistake.
And I just want to just take a moment to point out that all of this is happening actually very quickly. We just found out about this last evening or yesterday, late afternoon, correct?
Yeah. The governor introduced the bill on Friday at the end of the day.
Yeah. So that, so this is all happening very quickly and we haven't had, you know, we're still kind of processing this information right now. I just wanted to clarify that for the public.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously just a very big concern, but if we can only buy two weeks, that's not going to make, I don't think we'll see anything set in stone in the next two weeks.
Yeah, I couldn't tell you. It is, though, it's actually three weeks because of the calendar.
Oh, that's right.
Extra week.
We have an extra week this time. But I don't, I can't tell you, obviously, whether that'll make a difference or not.
And how stressful is it for us to delay this vote until then? How much does that, how much additional effort does that?
I mean, it doesn't take any additional effort other than it shortens the amount of time to fill out the final paperwork, but we can do that.
Okay. I guess I would favor just waiting and see.
So you would wait until the twenty-eighth, is that?
No, you'd set the, you'd have to, you have to set, you cannot set the, this public hearing later than the fourteenth because you have to have this done before you have the public hearing on the budget. And so that will take both meetings in March for that.
Okay. So can you walk us through, so can you give us the, so if we were to delay this, what would happen at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, which would be March, or excuse me, February fourteenth, you would have to take action on the maximum levy. You would set the public hearing for the twenty-eighth. And then we would have the public hearing for the budget, the second one that's required on March twenty-first after setting that on the March seventh. So we, the next four meetings, you would have to take action on the budget because that's the only way you can get done by March thirty-first.
And do we, like, I just want to clarify. So do we think that delaying it would give us any new information?
I don't, I don't know. I talked to our lobbyist today and he said that it hasn't been introduced in the House. It's only been introduced in the Senate. So that means it won't go quickly unless it was introduced in both houses at the same time.
So we could delay this and still have a situation where we don't know what's going to happen by the time we need to file the, our budget with the state?
Yeah. And the problem with not having, doing this action is that then you go automatically back to last year's dollar amount. So you can't take advantage of any of the increase in value.
Which we may not have an increase in value.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's going to be a small amount, but.
I guess it depends. I heard the rollback could be as much as forty-nine percent for residential.
Not for next year. It'd be, that prediction was for the following budget year.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
What are some other thoughts on that?
If we increase the max levy, is there, and we find out these changes did not occur, what would happen then? We'd still have to collect that revenue?
No, that's the maximum. The actual value that you use is what's in your budget as long as it's less than what your maximum levy hearing was.
So we could, we could consider doing that?
Yeah.
As a hedge against, against.
If you were going to do that, I wouldn't recommend doing that until the next meeting because there's all kinds of calculations you need to make before you can do that.
I mean, obviously, we're not the only city in this predicament. So, you know, I don't assume the legislature would do anything pragmatic, but they have to, we have to be at the point where, it's not like it's just Corville, like that every, you know, state statute requires a budgetary process to be what it is. So every, so I would assume whatever they decide to do, there would have to be some language in it that would allow for cities to have some flexibility in doing that. Otherwise, you'd be screwing over every single municipality in the city, in the state.
Yeah, I would agree with that, although I read the legislation and it doesn't change any of the dates as proposed.
So I won't assume they're being pragmatic? Okay.
Well, I don't know that they realized that there was a problem. So the Iowa League of Cities did meet with the governor's office yesterday to talk about the ramifications of all of this on cities. And you're right, I mean, Ellen and I belong to a listserv of probably a hundred cities of city managers, city administrators, and every one of them were discussing the impact on their individual budgets. So yes, it is a statewide issue. How it gets resolved, I don't know.
Any consensus in that listserv on what people were trying to do for this budget cycle or just going to hope it doesn't happen?
They were doing two, well, most of them were just going to go ahead as if it, that the legislation wasn't going to happen, but, you know.
Yeah, it might be our only option. I don't know. It is just very concerning to me.
We can ask for a voucher.
Well, we know we have money for those.
It might be more than seven thousand dollars that we can get.
What are some other thoughts on this? Because I do want to, you know, I know we have a pretty packed agenda, but I do want to, if we are going to consider postponing this, I do want to make sure that we're taking the time to have an adequate discussion about it. So I would like to hear some other thoughts from folks before we vote.
I mean, considering the timeline that Kelly just walked us through, I'm favoring waiting until the next meeting, but we do have to make the decision at the next meeting. Would that give us three weeks? Obviously, we don't know, we don't know whether it's going to change or stay the same, but at least we have that three weeks just to see. Because we can afford it.
And we can afford it for real?
Yeah. Thor, the city clerk, and I both checked out the schedule and we have to publish, Thor, what did you tell me? The day after?
After the council.
Meeting on the fourteenth. So he would actually have to send the document to the newspaper before the council meeting so that it gets published at the last date that it can be done.
And actually, it's set to go tomorrow. I can't cancel it, so we'll be resetting the public hearing technically.
But we would have to send it, unfortunately, before the next council meeting because there's a publication deadline in the law also. So it does need to be published. I believe it's the fifteenth, right, Thor? Yes.
And if, if we decided to hedge a little bit and increase the levy so that, we anticipated with the assumption, at least on my part, that we would go back to where we're at, propose right now, if there was no changes in the law. The changes in the law probably won't come into effect until May or June after we've already submitted our final budget. So we'd still have to be, we'd still have to be too high. Is that right?
Yeah.
Higher than, higher than what we're proposing here.
Right.
So I, I mean, I don't.
You could adjust the budget with amendments though afterwards.
Oh, you could.
Not the levy.
Not the levy, though, because you would already have certified the levy with the county.
Even though it's a max levy, but once the levy's set, you can't change that.
No, once you, you would be, have adopted the budget and the budget is what sets the levy that we, when we give it to the county auditor. So he certifies, takes those numbers, and then that's what he has to use. I only recall one time this happening, but it has happened once before where they, after cities and counties had adopted their budgets, they adopted something that changed everything after the fact.
And I don't think they gave us any time. They just said, deal with it.
So.
I was hoping maybe we could send a message to the state.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. I don't, yeah, once you, you're right, if you artificially set it high, you're going to, it would be automatic.
Yeah.
Oh, is that the message you're suggesting? We?
Any other thoughts on this before we vote on the resolution? So just to clarify, for the, we would just still keep the resolution as it is? It would just be a yea or nay vote?
To hold the public hearing.
To hold the public hearing at the next.
Or, yes, or you could also have a motion to.
Table it.
Table it if you chose to delay.
Okay. Are we comfortable with that?
So table until the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to table that until the fourteenth.
Okay. Could I get a second on that?
I second that.
Okay.
Voice vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. It is approved unanimously. We will table this item and we will set the public hearing at the February fourteenth meeting. So we can have a little bit more time to see what happens with the state. All right. Thank you all for that discussion. Okay. Item ten, Urban Renewal Plan Amendments. So we have two parts to this agenda item. The first is an amendment that would add the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar forgivable loan agreement with viewpoint molecular targeting to the list of urban renewal projects. Consultation on this would be January thirty-first, 2023, and the public hearing would be held on February fourteenth, 2023. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a date for consultation and a date for public hearing on Amendment number fourteen to the Mall and Highway Six Urban Renewal Plan, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Questions or comments on this item?
Yes. Viewpoint Molecular has purchased a building in Western Corville and this would be a phase one for them. They're in the process of designing all of the improvements in their expenditures to improve that building to be able to manufacture the drug that they are working on.
So the development agreement, if this was approved and the urban renewal plan was approved, would be on the next agenda also for the actual agreement? Because the plan has to be approved first, amendment has to be approved first.
Do we have a plan currently?
What'd you say?
What, do we have a current plan? What are the key forgivable things? I assume it's tied to jobs and.
This one is tied to staying in the building and paying the property taxes. And then there's going to be a second phase, as Kelly said, that would be tied to jobs and everything like that.
This is just paying the property taxes.
This is just, and making sure you actually stay in the building during the whole time of the agreement to get it forgiven.
They have to be occupying the building for their purposes for the next seven years. And at the end of the seven years, if they are still there, then it would be forgivable.
And how much are the property taxes relative to the loan?
Right now, the building was assessed at one-point-four, one-point-five million. I saw the sale went through for two-point-seven million, so the property taxes will be going up too. I don't have that off the top of my head, but they should be going up now too with the, and we'll capture the increment when they do their, when they do their upgrades, it'll go up even more. We'll be working with them to see what the minimum assessment on the value of the building will be when, when the improvements are done. Then we can make a calculation of what, what the phase two would be.
Their plan is to invest about eighteen million in the building, but we have to figure out how much of that is taxable.
So is it anticipated that most of the revenue from those real estate taxes will pay for this loan or not?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye. Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item B. This amendment would add the property needed to construct the Oakdale Boulevard Extension to the Clear Creek Amana School District Elementary School to the urban renewal area and also add the Oakdale Boulevard Extension Construction Project to the list of urban renewal projects. Consultation will be January thirty-first, 2023, and the public hearing will be held on February fourteenth, 2023. Could I have that resolution, please?
Resolution setting a date for consultation and a date for public hearing on Amendment number eleven to the Corville Urban Renewal Plan, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item eleven, Clear Creek Mitigation Bank. This is the first consideration of an ordinance that would allow the city to sell credits in the future to both public and private entities. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-one-thousand-one and ordinance authorizing the city of Corville to engage in offering the sale of stream bank mitigation credits to the public and private entities pursuant to Chapter twenty-three A of the Code of Iowa. Ordinance introduced for first consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Winn. Questions or comments?
Yes, this ordinance, as Kelly discussed at the last work session about some issues with, there's a law out there that says that public entities can't compete with private enterprise unless they pass an ordinance that says they can. So this ordinance is actually passing, the ordinance will allow us to compete in the marketplace for selling these credits in the future.
Great. Thank you.
Since we're here, where are we at with this whole project?
We're still waiting to hear from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers their last comments on our banking instrument, and we anticipate that those will be this weekend.
Our banking instrument?
That's the legal document that allows for the whole credit process.
Okay. When do we think the project will start?
We wouldn't actually build, we can start selling credits as soon as we sign the banking instrument. There's a certain percentage we can sell, but we wouldn't actually do the work until next winter because it's something that you want to do when the ground is frozen, it's easier to.
So you can actually sell credits before the work's done? I didn't really know.
Yeah. They have a certain percentage at each phase, and so as soon as the banking instrument, and I believe it's fifteen percent, but I don't know that for sure, then there's a percentage when you complete construction and then each year thereafter, you get additional credits you can sell.
But some of the work already started, right? Kelly, like Becky Creek is part of that? And wasn't it rich one?
Yeah, that work, though, doesn't count towards the credit. That's, this will be additional work beyond that for Becky's Creek. But you're right, yeah, there's been a lot of work done next to Becky's Creek.
Any other questions? Can I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Winn.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Item twelve, West Core Drive Extension. This would approve, would approve the paving, curb, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water main for the West Core Drive Extension connecting the western and eastern parts of West Core Drive south of Highway six. Could I get the resolution, please?
Resolution accepting public improvements constructed for the West Core Drive Extension in Corville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Seconded by Jones. Seconded by Jones. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item?
Just a comment, I had a chance to be out there this morning, and that's, there's some really nice lots, and, hopefully there was a sale.
Thank you, any other comments or questions?
It's essentially let them start the hotel we just heard about, right?
Yeah, was that the, that's at the end of the, where the road, yeah. There, to have, we had to have the two connections to have any more development out there, so this is, this is that project.
Yeah, this finalizes that?
Yes.
They were, their, the hotel was adjacent to the existing, but, uh, they couldn't build until it was connected.
Let's do it.
Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 13, Oakdale Boulevard Extension, this project will extend Oakdale Boulevard west of Jones Boulevard, and the public hearing for this item will be on February 14th, 2023. Could I get the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing on the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for Oakdale Boulevard Extension, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Hwin, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or comments?
So does this, does this extend west from the roundabout? Is that what we're doing here?
Yep, it'll be exactly from that point to school.
To school, okay, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Hwin?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 14, FFNE Warehousing Delivery and Installation Agreement. This agreement to store and deliver materials for the Hyatt Regency Hotel and Conference Center in Corleville is not to exceed $720,000, $720,476.50. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving an FFNE Warehousing Delivery and Installation Agreement with AW2 Logistics for the renovation of the Hyatt Regency Corleville Hotel and Conference Center, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Jones, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions on this item?
So, uh, maybe just an explanation, I thought AW2 is just a logistics company, do they, they don't do the installation? They contract with somebody?
There'd be a sub.
But the 720s for the whole deal, and then AW2 contracts with someone to do the installation?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 15, Commission Appointments. I would entertain a motion to concur with the appointments that I have made for the following commissions, the Arts Commission, Ann Burton, Carrie Houchnswit, and Chloe Angel, and for the Planning and Zoning Commission, the partial term, um, reappointment of Paul Aaron's. Could I get that motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Jones, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Hwin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The appointments are approved. Item number 16, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I ask council to consider motion to approve consent calendar as presented, A to S.
Moved by Hwin, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Gross. Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Hwin?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item number 17, City Administrators Report.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a couple of quick items. First, Winterfest was this last Saturday, and just, I'd like to thank all the volunteers and staff that worked on it, it was a great success, and, um, we had a good turnout, and just appreciate both the volunteers, um, staff, and the businesses that participated as well, um, it was a great event. And then this coming weekend, we have Burr Fest, um, at the, um, Hyatt Regency Corleville, and there are still some tickets, so people can come out and enjoy, um, that event as well. And then coming up, uh, before our next council meeting, we will have the girls' high school, um, wrestling tournament, will be on a Thursday and Friday, and then the boys', um, wrestling duels will be here on, uh, Saturday, and so there's a lot of work going into that, but we welcome all of them to the community as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic, thank you for that. Um, Mayor's Report, I have a couple of quick things, uh, first of all, I just wanted to wish everyone who celebrates a happy Lunar New Year, a few of us attended, uh, the beautiful event on, on Sunday night at the Engler, Councilmember Hwin was in attendance, and Councilmember Gross was there, and just, uh, a really wonderful event with lots of great performances, and just a really, really fun celebration. I also wanted to say congratulations to the staff at the Corleville Community Food Pantry. I know that Councilmember Hwin will have probably some announcements about that during her, her, uh, her time, but it, I, I stopped by just to say hello, and, and see how things were going on Saturday morning, and it was a very smooth transition, it was like you had been there the entire time. And if you haven't had a chance to check out that space, it is just, it is, it is phenomenal, it's gonna be a, a tremendous asset to our community, and we're just always grateful for the work of the, the individuals, the, the staff and the volunteers at the pantry, for the valuable service that they provide, um, to our community. Um, I also wanted to just note that last week, we had a, a very well-attended meeting, uh, discussing the, the project, uh, the, the Mid-American project of, of burying the, the power lines and some of the communication lines that, um, in, in, in the, uh, some of the neighborhoods in the older part of our community, and there was a fantastic turnout, I wanted to say thank you to all the neighbors that came out and, and asked some really thoughtful questions. If you missed that meeting, there is a video that is online, so if you go to the homepage of our website, um, you'll see on the homepage that there is an item that, that'll lead you to, to watch that video. And I would assume that if anyone had questions, they could just reach out to either Ellen or, or, um, our city engineer, Scott Larson, correct?
That's correct.
Great. Um, and then I was also just going to thank everyone who, uh, helped out with Winterfest, it was a lot of fun, and I really appreciate the, um, effort of our Parks and Rec staff to encourage folks to get outside even, even when it's cold, and, and enjoy all the recreation activities that we have. I think, I think we're finally gonna get some snow in the next few days, so we can, we can, you know, look at some of the, the, uh, fun sledding, snowshoeing, other, other outdoor activities that we can take advantage, advantage of when there is snow on the ground. Okay, and that is all I have this evening. City Attorney's Report?
I have nothing.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Uh, Committee and Council Members Report, we'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I have nothing today.
Oh, okay, Councilmember Gross?
Yeah, I was checking things off as you were doing it. I will say, for those of you that are maybe here for the, um, speed discussion, please feel free to stick around for the, um, work session in this room.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hwin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, just to piggyback on what you said about Lunar, Lunar New Year, um, so that new year is being celebrated by probably half of the population of the world, um, but one thing I wanted to note is that, um, oftentimes, the Western world learned that this year is the year of the rabbit, but actually, us Vietnamese, we celebrate the year of the cat. So the Zodiac is a little different, um, I don't know why, but growing up, you know, we, we celebrate this year at the year of the cat, and then, you know, all the other Asians celebrate it as the year of the rabbit, so if there's confusion out there, that's just, you know, people say, "Happy the year, happy, you know, happy the year of the cat", you know that they are Vietnamese. And, the pantry has been open since Saturday, that was our first opening day, and today is our second opening day, and I have to say a big thank you to all of our supporter, all of our community, um, effort in getting that building up and running, without the support of the community and all of our volunteer, we would not be there. Um, and that building is open to everyone, so if anyone in the community would like to come by for a tour, for the services that we offer, um, you know, go on our website, check out our open hour, and come by anytime. Um, if you see car there, knock on the door, we'll come out and greet you and give you a tour, and pack you some food to take home as well. Chat and chai, well, um, the library cafe space is remodeled, and it is open to everyone, and Samira, our community resource navigator, is hosting a chat and chai, so she is making fresh chai, chai, chai every Tuesday morning, um, and she's just putting it out there, sometimes she had bagels, sometimes donuts, sometimes other baked goods, um, it's a space where community can, member can come, um, asking about services that are available within our community and within the Johnson County, um, and if you need help with anything, whether filling out application for things, um, you know, translation services, anything at all, Samira is there to help you, and every Tuesday from 10 to 11:30, and then it's also taking place on the first Saturday of the month. Whew, I have a lot tonight, sorry.
Go for it.
And then February 1st is War Hijab Day, and Samira is putting together a wonderful event that will take place on February 1st, which is next Wednesday, um, from 4:30 to 6:30, at, um, that cafe space in the Corleville Public Library. It is going to be an interactive event, so you'll have a chance to try on hijab, learn all about hijab, and why people choose to wear hijab, and what religion it's, it's affiliated with. So I encourage the community member to come out and check that out. And then tax season is upon us, and so if you need free tax help, you can go to biz, B-I-Z dot U-I-O-R dot E-D-U slash VITA, V-I-T-A, to ask for, um, tax help, and then if you need interpretation help, then you can contact Ann at Johnson County Social Service through 319-356-6090. And then if you are in trouble and you need legal advice or legal services, there is also a free legal service that open to all resident regardless of immigration status, and it's help with landlord, tenant, uh, immigration law, employment, work issue, family law, and it's, um, open every second Tuesday of the month, from 5:30 to 7:30, and the address is 1035 Wade Street in Iowa City, and that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Councilmember Jones?
Madam Mayor, I apologize for, again, uh, talking about the Corleville Food Pantry, but I would be remiss if I did, and I just think back that Food Pantry now is about 12 years old in Corleville, and the progress it's made from that early start down on, on Second Street in Corleville, uh, to the, to the post office, which is a great move and a great facility for them, and now, uh, through the, uh, through a lot of, uh, support from the community, a lot of support from the city of Corleville, and, uh, a lot of support from, uh, the Corleville United Methodist Church, it is, uh, what everyone has said already is very true, it's a wonderful facility, and will serve the community for many years, so it's, it, we, three of us have talked about it now, but it is a big deal, so, uh, I congratulate the pantry and look forward to the service they can provide to our community for many years to come. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Yes, and it, yes, and it is, it's, it is a very big deal, that's why we are all gushing about it, and it is wonderful. All right, finally, Councilmember Goodrich?
I have nothing to add, congratulations on the Food Pantry, I know many members here and past council members have been very involved with that as well as the community, and, uh, also, congratulations to the Winterfest Committee, um, look forward to many more fun times out in, out in the, um, by the river, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may I say one, I forgot one thing, I wanted to?
Go for it.
I wanted to acknowledge Mike Hodge and Hodge Construction, because without their help, that project would not have happened, and, and they, uh, they did a great job, they brought it in, uh, I think on budget, and, uh, on time, and, and it couldn't be done without their help, so I just wanted to recognize Hodge Construction for that.
Fantastic, yes, a worthy inclusion, absolutely, we appreciate all of their work on that project.
No easy task these years, seeing things on budget.
That's, that's, that is true, that is absolutely true. Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by?
Seconded.
Seconded by Hwin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.